Good evening and welcome to the September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Yorktown Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Gordon Fine. I chair the board. Joining me tonight are Bill Gregory, John Meistrich, Anthony Tripodi, Bob Fahey, our recording secretary, Glenda Daly, our legal assistant is Reen Kurian, our assistant building inspector, Steve Freyetta. First thing we need to do is set up next month's meeting. Next month's meeting will be October twenty-first, I'm sorry, October twenty-sixth at six-thirty here in the boardroom. We'll be doing site visits the Saturday before on October twenty-first, so we have to do a site visit at your property. We'll be there on the morning of Saturday, September, October twenty-first. We start here in the southern end of town around nine-thirty, work our way north. If you have to send your mailings out, your mailings must be sent out between October second and October eleventh. If you send them out before October second or after October eleventh, we will not be able to open your meet, your hearing next month. You also must post a sign on your property and submit to the building department or the legal department an affidavit that they'll give you showing that the sign was posted properly and a photograph of the sign on the property as well. To find out who you need to notify, you have to go to the tax office, give them your address, tell them you're doing the zoning board mailings. They will then show you the names and addresses of those parties you have to notify. You list those parties on the sheet that the building department will give you with your application. Those are the people you have to send the notices to and submit that sheet along with the copy of the notices to the building department after you send them out. They must be sent out by first-class mail with certificate of mailing. You do not need to send them by certified mail, only a certificate of mailing, which only costs about a dollar each as opposed to about six dollars each. Then you submit those all before the next meeting and hopefully everything will be in order. We'll open your hearing next month. Next on the agenda is to approve last month's minutes. Everybody received a copy?
Yes.
Changes, comments, anything?
It's good.
Move that the minutes for last month be approved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, first off, we have new business is Miles for Smiles. Anyone here on that?
Right.
Want to come up? Application for special use permit to allow a childcare facility for approximately fifty-one children to occupy a tenant space in the Lord's Shopping Center. Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Which, which storefront is that, is that going to be in?
Where Lord's originally had a jewelry store.
The first one?
It's the first one closest to Route Six.
Okay. We're going to set this down for a site visit on the twenty-first, refer to the building department, the planning department, and the fire marshal, and set it down for a public hearing.
Do you want to do anything with the county on that?
No. I suggest you make sure you check the code section that falls, this falls under, make sure you have everything you need under that section to comply with what's required, permits or everything else.
I'm not sure if this is appropriate, but is this your first foray into doing daycare?
No, I work in daycare.
I was going to say, there's a, there is, there was a daycare across from Seton.
Yes.
Okay, and then, okay, just to bring it to your attention.
Oh, yes, that's good, yeah, yes.
Okay, all right.
If I can make a minor correction.
Sure.
Oh, of smiles.
It's not Miles for Smiles.
Okay.
Noted.
Don't print the sign yet.
Noted.
Okay, I move that we adjourn it for the next month. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, see you then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Orelana. Application for special use permit to construct a new accessory apartment that requires a special use permit, seven forty-eight Loxley Road. Good evening.
Good evening.
Your names, please?
Victor Garedo.
Laura DeZorriana.
Okay, and was this a new purchase or you're just building the, you're just installing an accessory apartment? No, did you just buy the property recently?
No, it's, I've been there at least six years.
Okay. So it's, it's no accessory apartment there now?
No.
Okay, so we'll set this down for a site visit on the twenty-first, refer to the building inspector, and set it down for public hearing. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, well, move to adjourn all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rizzo. Application to construct a spiral staircase off the rear deck with a setback of one-point-two-five feet where ten feet is required at three-four-four-three Lakeside Drive.
Where is Lakeside?
Probably next to a lake.
Is that Mohegan, yeah? Is that Mohegan or?
Yes.
It is.
We'll refer this, have a, a site visit on this, refer to the building department in public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anything on?
Two shots of daisies here while we, but, rimshot.
Carvallo sixteen eighty-one Summit Street, application subdivided lot creating two lots at sixteen eighty-one Summit Street. That's going to be adjourned. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Grace at nine fifty-nine Hanover Street, that's also going to be adjourned. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, there are two Black Mountain Capital applications, both at sixteen fifty-eight Amazon Road. One is for legalized three accessory apartments in a single-family home. The other one's for two primary structures on a non-conforming lot. That application, both applications are being withdrawn by the applicant, so those are now withdrawn. Next application is O'Donnell, which is at fourteen oh five Terrace Lane. That's for a six-foot, six-inch fence. That is also being withdrawn by the applicant. Next up is Alexandre. We'll come back to that. They weren't here last month either. Next up is McNamee at two, twenty-four eighty-seven, twenty-seven eighty-four Holly Street. That's also adjourned by the applicant. Anything on Bogah this month?
They, I called and said they were coming.
Okay, Bogah? No, okay, moving on. Abrams? Come on up. Application renewal of special use permit for accessory apartment at thirty-four sixty-one Sagamore Avenue. Good evening, sir.
Hello.
Your name, please?
David Abrams.
Okay, this is for renewal, correct?
Yes.
We have a memo from the building department dated September eighth. They showed no objections. Anybody in the audience have a comment on the application? Anybody on the board? Okay, it's just a renewal, so I would move that we grant the application renewal of a special use permit for accessory apartment at thirty-four sixty-one Sagamore Avenue for a period of three years. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Application to construct a new front portico that requires a front yard setback of thirty-six-point-four-four feet where forty feet is required at thirty-eight seventy-three Eleanor Drive. Good evening.
Good evening. David Tetra representing the owner.
Okay, you want to just run us through your application?
Yes, we have a existing front stoop of a house where they're enclosing half of the front stoop as part of like a vestibule, which we've got a permit for already. So the other half of the front stoop, we want to put an overhang with some columns and that would kick us into the front yard required setback. We're not increasing, let me just make sure that I'm saying the right thing here.
Is this now? Yeah, right there. On portico, Duennas, page two. Yeah. Just two months ago.
Okay, so.
Do you have the plans up on the board?
Yes.
Anything changing with the plans?
Nothing's changing with the plans. I just want to make sure that I'm stating this correctly. We have, the site plan is showing the dimension to the front yard off the front corner of the house, so it didn't include the front stoop as that setback. So technically, we're not changing the non-conforming front yard setback of thirty-six-point-four feet. We're just kind of building on top of what that existing stoop is. We're not, we're not extending closer to the street. Just, so basically, the original front yard setback of forty-three-point-eight-nine feet, which conforms, is just to the front corner of the house, not to the constructed stair that's there. So we're, we're quite of also clarifying that the record will hold that this thirty-six-point-four-four feet was kind of existing.
Right. Did we approve the vestibule before or?
Well, the vestibule came in at, it was compliant. It was like a couple of inches shy of coming into the front yard setback.
Anybody in the audience have a comment on the application? Anything else on the board? We have a memo from the building department dated September eighth showing no objections. All right, that being said, I don't think that this application is going to, the construction of this portico is going to have any negative impact on the neighborhood at all. Therefore, I move to approve the application to construct a new front portico that requires a front yard setback of thirty-six-point-four-four feet where forty is required at thirty-eight-seventy-three Eleanor Drive with usual stipulation that this pertains to the requested variance, only not the remainder of the property line, and that be, to construct the new portico be done in substantial conformity to the plans submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Hoffman. Application renewal of special use permit for accessory apartment at thirty-eight oh-eight Old Crampon Road. Okay, this is usually handled administratively, which means the applicant does not have to be here. There was a memo dated September eighth from the building department dating no objections. Anybody in the audience, any comments on this one? Anybody on the board? Okay, I move that the application for the renewal of the special use permit at thirty-eight oh-eight Old Crampon Road be granted for a period of three years. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Application to legalize a shed with a side yard of three feet, six inches where ten feet is required at two sixty-four Foxcroft Lane. Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, chairman and members of the board. My name is Nora Hildinger. I'm here representing the owners of two sixty-four Foxcroft Lane. We are here to request a variance for a shed at two sixty-four Foxcroft Lane. The shed is thirteen feet by nine feet or one hundred and seventy-seven square feet. The shed is in the back portion of the rear yard. The shed is three feet, six inches off the property line where ten feet is required. The shed has been there for over twenty-five years. When the first, when the shed was first constructed, the contractor told the property owner, and I know that's no excuse, that no building permit was required. And I just want to also make a note that when looking at the survey of the yard, the yard is pie-shaped, so the, the shed is pushed way back at the, the back of the yard, but the yard, the yard narrows as you go, as, the yard is very narrow in the back, so that caused it to be so close to the property line.
Most people usually don't put the shed in the middle of the yard, so.
Right, so that caused it to be so close to the property line. So that's the description and why I'm here, but I'd also, I'm going to go through the five factors.
Well, before we do that.
Okay, questions?
I can stop you from doing that, but.
Okay.
There's a memo from the building department dated September eighth where he noted that the, there's a fence of a height of six feet in the side and front yards. Now, the town recently adopted a new fence law that permits six feet in the side and rear yard, but not in the front.
Okay.
Front is still four-point-five.
Oh, okay.
So I'm going to add the front yard fence of six feet where four-point-five is to the application.
Oh, okay. That's great, thank you.
Now you can proceed.
Okay. Wow, thank you. Okay, the five factors. The first factor, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. There will be no undesirable change to the neighborhood. The shed has been there for twenty-five-plus years and has not produced any changes over the last twenty-five years. Also, I want to note that the shed is not visible from the road. Two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than a variance. The shed is in the most logical area, and once again, because of the pie shape, it pushed it closer to the side yard.
It could be moved, though. I mean, that's, let's be honest. If we had to go down that road.
It would be, I'll, I'll get, I'll get to that. I'll address that. Whether the requested variance is substantial, I don't think it's substantial. The variance, if altered, will, okay, the factor number four, whether the variance, if authorized, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or district in which the property is located, nor substantially or permanently impair the appropriate use or development of adjacent property, nor be a detriment to public welfare. On all of those, it will not impair anybody else, it, it, the development, the development of adjacent properties, nor be a detriment to public welfare. And if the variance is granted, it will have no adverse effect on the neighborhood. But if it's granted, if it's not granted, it would cause a considerable hardship for the owner. The shed really can't be moved. It's, and if, and to remove it would, would be a financial hardship. And the last, so that, I did address that. I, I don't really think it could be moved, I mean.
It's not, we were there, so it's not very new, the shed, I would say.
No.
So I guess you have an, you have an argument there that it wouldn't, it wouldn't hold up to a.
To trying to get like wood under it and push, I, I just don't think the shed could be moved.
It may not survive, is what you're saying.
It's, I think it's been there for at least twenty-five years. And the last factor, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, this one, it's kind of hard to say it wasn't self-created.
It wasn't created by this.
It's always kind of hard to say it wasn't self-created.
Most of the zoning board applications are self-created.
Yeah, it's, that's a really hard one.
But none of them have any, that, all the factors, they're not equally weighted, so it's not like we have to look at, this is twenty percent, this is twenty percent, so.
So I, that one, I, I did say that, but, but once again, I'm going to bring up the topography, the, the, the pie shape of the yard, so it did seem like a logical place. So those were, that's what I'm here to say. Thank you, thank you for listening, thank you.
Anybody in the audience have a comment on the application? Anybody on the board? You want to?
Well, yeah, I'll just.
You got to come up to the microphone.
New owner of the property.
You got to, you got to come up to.
Hi.
There you go, state.
My name's John Ronaldo. I'm the new owner of the property, just moved in at the beginning of the month, about two weeks ago. I just want to second the request for the variance because it is in a tucked-away spot. Looks like it's been there a long, long time, as she said, and.
Actually, she's seconding your request.
Yeah, I guess so. However that works. But I'm here to validate what she's saying because I live on the property now and, and it is an old shed and it's been there a long time, and it is out of view, out of sight, tucked away in the back, really not bothering anyone, the neighbors or anything else. So I think to move it would mean either putting it in the center of that backyard or on the other side of the house, which is an open space, which makes it visible to everyone and it's a bit of an eyesore, so. My purpose is it's in a good spot, but those are my two cents. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would move that, well, first off, from being there, the shed looks like it, it's pretty much grown roots where it is. It's been there pretty much a long time. As far as changing the character of the neighborhood, it pretty much is the character of the neighborhood. So I would move that we grant the application to legalize a shed with a side yard of three feet, six inches where ten is required, and also a front yard fence with a height of six feet where four-point-five feet is the maximum at two sixty-four Foxcroft Lane with usual stipulation, this pertains only to requested variances and not the remainder of the property line. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much, thank you.
It's on the.
Ichbal?
It's over here.
Anyone here on Ichbal?
It's not even across.
No? How about Shillsky?
No, it's.
Application to construct a tennis court which requires a front yard variance of thirty-eight feet where seventy-five is required at eight fifteen Old Kitchwan Road. Yes, sir, your name?
My name is Lawrence Shillsky. I'm here.
Just give us a brief rundown of your, of your application.
My application's to have a variance, so I can put a tennis court on my land, and I'm asking for a partial variance from the setback from the street. It's a very quiet neighborhood and I don't think I'm going to be interfering with anyone.
How much land is there?
There's one-point-eight acres.
And as you're facing the house, the neighbor to the left is the fire department, correct?
Correct.
And the tennis court you want to put in is to, it's kind of in the front, but it's to the left of the house?
Correct, yes.
And what else do we have there? Is that the only variance? Yeah. So the neighbor that would affect the most, if you could call the word affect accurate, is the fire department?
Correct, yes.
Anybody on the board have any questions?
I guess it's like, you know, in and of itself, if you just paved a court, you wouldn't really even need a variance, so it's, I guess, really the height of the fence.
You just need a lot of tennis balls.
Yeah, the height of the fence.
Right.
So how high is the fence?
It's going to be ten feet. Otherwise, you have to chase a lot of balls in the back.
At least, I don't want, I wouldn't necessarily want to see a thirty, forty-foot fence or whatever. I'm not a tennis person, so I don't know how high those fences are.
You don't usually get those.
If it was a baseball.
I wouldn't want to see it either.
Yeah.
We have a memo from the building department dated September eighth. They have no objection. Anybody in the audience have a comment on this? Little tennis fans out there? Tennis, okay. I, from looking at the property, I don't see how it's going to affect anybody negatively. I would move that we grant the application to construct a tennis court which requires a front yard variance of thirty-eight feet where seventy-five feet is required at eight fifteen Old Kitchwan Road with the stipulation that it be constructed in substantial conformity with the plans submitted and that this pertains only to the requested variance, not the remainder of the property line. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Okay, so we got to go back because there are people here, but there was no one here for the applications. Let's start, which one are you here on?
Alexandre.
Are you the applicant?
Yeah.
Come on up. Alexandre, application allowed chicken coop in front yard as was determined by previous variance and require a variance of thirty square feet where forty square feet is required, and lot size of twenty thousand two hundred and twenty-six square feet where forty thousand is required at twenty-one oh-seven Lavoy Court. Good evening.
Good evening.
State your names, please.
Noelia Bruno Alexandre.
And Nun Alexander.
Okay, you were here a couple of months back when we reopened the application.
Correct.
And you had to submit plans, which you did.
Yes.
I would note from the plans, though, that you're putting up a fence.
Yes.
But the fence on the plans does not indicate the height of the fence.
It was a fence on a, on a, on a backyard, which is the front yard, eight-foot high. I took it down because it was damaged and I'm going to replace it as it's at the same height.
In the front yard, you're saying?
Yes.
Because the front can only allow a four-point-five-foot fence.
It's the same on my neighbor, the, the fence is.
It doesn't matter whether your neighbor has the same one, if it, if it needs a variance, it needs a variance.
Yeah, we can adjust the height.
We can adjust the height. It's just so the chickens don't run.
Well, you may want a higher, the front yard is that, that faces two oh-two is where you want the fence.
Yeah.
So you may want a higher fence. I'm not telling you you should put a lower fence, I'm saying if you want a higher fence, you should ask for a variance for it.
Okay.
The fence was there.
Because it may be more appropriate than a four-and-a-half-foot fence. You just can't do it without the variance.
It should be six feet, that's what I was thinking to put there. It was link fence.
So you want a six-foot fence in the rear yard facing two oh-two, basically.
Actually, it's the front.
Front yard.
Front yard. Back of the house, front yard.
We'd like to change that because that's really the backyard.
Yeah, we can't change, it's already been determined.
Yeah. That my backyard, the front yard.
Yeah. It was previously determined.
It has everything to do with the layout and the property lines, it has nothing to do with anything else.
There was a zoning board decision in nineteen ninety-three that determined that was your front yard.
Good to know.
Don't worry too much about it. You can do, you know, you don't have to call it your front yard if you don't want to. It's just the way the property was developed over time and how things are defined. Don't, don't worry too much about that.
You would want one, I would think.
I would, I'd say, I know you want one, but I don't know whether the state has.
There was also a couple of months back, the building inspector had noted that there was something with the front porch that needed repair. Was that taken care of?
No idea.
Because that was in violation of the building code, which.
We're, we're in the process of getting quotes from different carpenters to get that taken care of.
It was the electrical, right? Probably the electrical?
Was it?
Yeah, yeah, there was an electrical issue and plus the, the structure itself wasn't.
Yeah.
In my opinion, it's not stable.
It'll be subject to.
It needs to be addressed.
Anybody in the audience have a comment on the application? You know you can't keep roosters, only chickens.
Yeah, no roosters, only chickens.
How many, how many chickens were you looking?
What, is this three years?
Huh? How many chickens you figuring on?
It's a three-year permit?
Six?
No more than six.
You know, I, I, smart man, you'll have a lot of eggs. Oh, man.
Eat it in this economy.
Steve, is this a three-year permit? It's either three or five. I'm guessing it must be three.
It's three.
I'd say three on the first round.
Most people only do it for.
Well, that's up to them.
I think it's a three.
You may find if the one that you're done with the chickens, but that's another story.
I'm going to go to ducks.
Okay, so I would move that we grant the application to allow a chicken coop in the front yard as was determined by a previous zoning variance, which will require thirty-square-foot, variance of thirty square feet where forty is required, and lot size of twenty thousand two hundred and twenty-six square feet where forty thousand is required, as well as a six-foot fence in the front yard that faces two oh-two, where two oh-two. And that there, no, no roosters would be permitted, and that this permit is subject, will be issued subject to the front porch being brought into code.
Okay.
And that the, and that be built with screening and the plans and the.
Treats.
The maintenance.
And the maintenance, obviously, as per the plans submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
This will be for three years. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do I need a permit to fix the front porch?
You gotta talk to the building inspector. He has to inspect it, make sure.
Can request, okay.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, which one you here on? Sarls? Okay. That's Iqbal, right?
Iqbal?
Are you, are you here just to kind of see what's going on or? Oh, all right. We thought maybe, we thought maybe you were gonna talk to us about that.
And which one are you here on, folks? We have no applicants here. So.
Is that, is this is the property where I wanna put the twenty story apartment building? I'm teasing.
Um. Gentlemen.
I don't know what, well.
Round of people.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no, nothing you can do.
All right, so.
We can invite these people to come to the building department and review the plans.
I'm gonna call Boga, which is application renewal specialist permit for accessory apartment at thirty-seven forty-seven Briar Hill. I'd ask the, uh, no applicant this year. I'd ask our legal office to send a notice. What's that?
It's renewal.
It's renewal.
Oh, it's renewal, okay. Then we don't have to be here. Then there was a building memo of September eighth with no objection. No one in the audience had a, I guess, a comment on anybody on the board? And whether we grant that application, renew the accessory apartment at thirty-seven forty-seven Briar Hill for a period of three years. Do I have a second?
For a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, then we have Iqbal, which is application for building permit to construct in addition that will require the following variances, side yard setback of thirteen feet six inches where fifteen feet is required. Combined, combined yard must be side yard. Variance of thirty-three feet six inches where forty feet is required. And a rear yard setback of thirty-three feet six inches where forty feet is required. Properties in non-conforming lot area of thirteen thousand one thirty-seven square feet where twenty thousand feet is required. At twenty-eight hundred Sarls Court, we have no applicant.
Yeah, we can't open, we can't, can't open it.
So it's not open.
Well, if all the mailings were done and whatnot, can we open it?
Not without, not without the applicant. So it is that the applicant. Oh, it is your application?
That's what I thought.
Oh, okay, then come on. That's what he, that's what he had asked.
Did I, did I not ask that question?
Come on up. Want to give us your name?
Yeah, so, um, I'm Paola. I'm on behalf of the architect.
What's the full name, full name?
Paola Rodriguez.
Okay. You want to run us through the application?
Sure, so this application is for an interior renovation and horizontal enlargement.
Excuse me, one second. Folks, why don't you, if you wanna hear this, why don't you come closer to the front?
So this is an interior renovation and, um, horizontal enlargement of an existing one family house. So basically, what we're doing is we're taking one thousand one hundred and ninety-eight square feet and we're turning, um, and once, one family house into two thousand, two thousand and four hundred and eighty square feet. Which we requested some variances, uh, on the backyard. Um, I, I have an understanding that uh, there has been some concerns about that. That's why we applied for that. Um, we have right now four bedrooms. Uh, one kitchen, one living room, um, one single family house. The idea of this house is to be turned into, to be sold to one family, not to be rented out. Um, and as you can see there on the existing plans, oh, sorry, can you just stay there? Oh, that's fine. Just, if you can just stay there. So, um, just to walk you through, um, probably to how this house is gonna work. Because I understand that this house has been like, um, abandoned for a while.
Let, let me ask you, while you're doing, let me ask you some questions. This house looks like originally was a trailer, not a, not a house per se that has that look to it?
Was it built, was it built on piers? Do you know? Like, it was like they just, there's no basement.
It was transported.
Ma'am, if you're gonna, if you have to speak, you have to come through the microphone.
No, so, okay, so from a construction perspective, so we do have some foundation, uh, concrete foundation and wood trust on the, on the existing crawling space. That's what we have right now.
Because from looking at the house, it, it looks like it should be a teardown as opposed to just building in addition.
I understand that. And when we made the original inspection, we thought that at first. However, uh, you know, the fact that the house has been abandoned for a while, uh, the owner has been paying taxes, uh, for a while on that. Um, he really wants to make, on the one hand, the, the most out of what we have right now, which is the foundation can be saved, since it's made of, out of concrete. And then we have the wood trust, um, on this portion of the house, which should be on the front facade. This portion can be saved and potentially part of the footprint on that side. So the idea is to connect the wood trust, um, and then the extension towards, um, the left side. And.
Gotta put a new roof on there too, I would assume.
Was that?
Need a new roof, I would assume also.
We will, we will have to probably make a, a new roof. Of course, the fact that we're gonna try to, you know, turn a portion, a portion of this down and then re-roof the house. We are hoping on saving a part of it, but I don't think that's gonna be, you know, an entire, an entirety, which.
Wait, wait till they open us.
Probably, we get to keep some rafters, that's gonna be, you know, fine. Of course, we're always trying to look at the most cost effective, uh, part.
Ma'am, ma'am, just, excuse me, if you're gonna be speaking, you gotta go to the microphone, because otherwise they can't pick you up.
So, yeah, so basically, uh, probably the roof will have to repl- replace. What I do know for sure is that the wood trust on the, on the floor can be saved. Um, we'll just have to bridge them with the enlargement.
But once you start opening up those walls, you think you'll be able to bring the whole building up to code?
Uh, yes.
Without.
With electric and plumbing and all that stuff, insulation and anything else?
So basically, we are just going to keep, um, thirty feet on the front yard, on the front facade, thirty feet linear feet, and then twenty feet on the side yard for the walls. Of course, we'll have to open, uh, remove, uh, cavity insulation. We will have to, uh, create new continuous, uh, insulation. Um, there's a lot of work to do on the portion that we are going to keep. But then again, of course, we, we are gonna make sure that everything is bringing up to code and whatever has to be replaced, has to be replaced. One thing for the mechanical, electrical and plumbing portion of the, of the job. We are gonna be bringing, uh, central air. Um, I understand that the house only, um, has a sewer line, which is where we're going to be connecting.
Is there septic there now?
Yes.
So you're gonna remove the septic?
Yes. So we do have that, but then, oh, so here is the, is the roof. So basically, what we're gonna do is the central air will have to have, um, you know, a pipe, um, a gas tank, because we don't have natural gas in this house.
Looked like there was a gas line behind the house.
Yeah, but there, but there's no really like.
And there's no piped in gas, but there was a gas line there.
It, there was probably, but there's not in use or something like, yeah, so. Right, so the idea is to bring a gas tank to be connected to these, um, central air appliances. And to, that way we can operate the, uh, heating and cooling system. Electrical is gonna be everything recessed lightings. We have the minimal height on the house, which is allowed per code. And then pretty simple, four bedrooms, uh, three bedrooms.
What's the addition that you're putting up?
What is?
Where's the addition going? What's going in that?
Uh, bedrooms, three bedrooms.
Where is that gonna be in the house?
Where?
What part of the house is that?
Oh, that's gonna be, um, as, as you're seeing the plans, it's gonna be towards the left. That would be northeast.
As you're facing the house, is it to the left or the right?
To the left, left and back.
If you go back to the site plan, maybe scroll back or?
As if you're facing the house would be, yeah, towards the left and side.
Is that where the septic field is now, on that side?
I don't know if you can zoom in on this?
That, um.
You see the hatched is the.
That's the enlargement.
Addition, so it's to the left if you're looking from the front of the house, the left and behind.
Is the, is that old carport that's on the right-hand side, is that coming out or what are we doing?
Yes, all of that's coming out, yeah.
And that's, and that'll be, and that'll be from the plans, you're gonna, you're going to expand it to that area for living space?
Yes, that's gonna be just living space.
Now, you're also looking to put in a shed?
Uh, no, so there's an existing shed, uh, which is gonna be removed. Uh, the only thing we're keeping in the back would be the garage. Which is there right now.
That shed.
The freestanding garage or a garage that's already attached to the house?
It's, um, it's, it's already there. We're just going to probably.
I know there was a garage door there, but it's, it's barely a garage.
Yeah, so we will have to make some adjustments again, like to bring it up to code.
If you're riding bicycles, it's a good garage.
Right. The thing, the thing is that we do wanna keep it just because we do have the drive-through.
Garage gonna be extended at all?
Nope.
The garage gonna stay the same footprint?
It's gonna stay the same, the same footage. The only thing that we're going to remove is the shed, because that's definitely not like, it's not even, it's not even going to be necessary to have it, it's not. It's gonna fall down if we don't just remove that.
What is the, what's the, what's the square footage of this house, of the existing house now?
Uh, one thousand, uh, one hundred and sixty-eight. Oh, sorry, one thousand two hundred and sixty-eight square footage.
Okay, so basically about twelve hundred square feet. And the new house is gonna be what?
The total is gonna be two thousand four hundred and eighty square feet.
So we're double the size.
Yes.
And we're going up or just going out?
Just, yeah, we're gonna keep it as one story.
One story.
And so the addition will not have a basement either then?
Nope, the crawling space is gonna remain as crawling space, no usage.
So on this plan, it's the site plan, it's the one that's up, it says new garage, so I would take that, that you're basically gotta demo the existing garage pretty much one hundred percent.
Because basically, if you're gonna demo.
This is not fierce, right?
Yeah, that's.
For that.
So was, was the garage asked for on this at all?
Well, the garage, the garage, existing garage is built into the house right now.
Well, there's a. No, they've got, if you look at the server.
But that was the shed.
Well, it says new garage is twenty-two by eighteen.
Oh, there's.
It's not really a shed.
On the site plan, it's, there's two, two small structures in the back. One, one of them says shed, the other one says new garage.
It's right up on the screen now, but.
Yeah, so the portion that says new garage, it's supposed to be, uh, renovation of the existing garage.
How, how are we gonna get access to that new garage?
Oh, there's an existing drive-through.
Are we gonna, are we gonna try that right-hand side where the driveway is now?
Yes, yes, yes.
That's very tight.
New garage.
It is tight, that's why, um, yeah, that's why, of course, the extension is gonna be towards the other side, because, yeah, it is very tight. I, I drive through and it is very tight. It's enough, though.
The garage you wanna keep in the back there, though, would also need a variance too, because it's almost right on the line.
Okay.
And there's no driveway.
On that part of the plan?
Yeah, they're going to see that.
No, yeah, I saw it. I saw what it said, but there was no plans.
I'm saying it would have to be part of the application.
It's not part of the application. The garage?
Yeah.
No, it's not part of the application.
Um, so, yeah, so I guess we didn't bring it to your attention just because it was an existing and it was, you know, we, we're thinking of just, you know, accommodating the building.
How do you access that garage from the driveway? You drive straight into it?
Yes.
Because it looked like the garage, it looked like that what was there is you drive in a very narrow garage and you have to make a hard left to get into a garage.
Yeah.
It is very narrow.
That's the garage you're looking to keep?
Yes. That's, that's why we are removing the steps, the existing steps that we have to, to the right side, just to make it a little, a little bigger, the driveway.
I guess, I guess.
I know, there was a garage.
There was another shed in the back. I saw that. There was a shed, but she's saying there's a shed and a garage in the back.
According to the site.
What I saw was an old, like a carport type of setup.
Just a left and right.
And, and it, there was like a.
Essentially, is the structure and such.
Yeah, garage. I mean, I didn't see another garage. And you could put a Volkswagen in there, but you weren't getting anything bigger than that.
Guys, guys.
I'm asking a question.
I'm sorry, we didn't realize.
So he was asking me if we, uh, what is, what's the plan with the garage? If we are going to keep the garage, we're going to remove, uh, the structure? So, no, when we did the first inspection, the structure, uh, it's supposed to hold. We will have to remove, uh, you know, cavities, uh, insulations, walls, roof, for sure. Um, if, if it comes down to, you know, uh, between construction, um, terms, that we have to redo this, the structure. Uh, you have, you can be sure that the footprint is not going to change, like, we, it's gonna be, it's gonna remain as it is. Um, we just have to keep it because, again, it's the only, it's the only portion of the, of the land where we have a drive-through already created. And, you know, there is no other.
My, my point of confusion is when we were there, you come in, there's a very narrow driveway.
Yeah.
And you had to make a hard left to get into what looked like an old carport with the garage door.
Oh, I understand. No, so, no, no, no.
That's what I thought you were referring to as the garage. That's part of the house.
Yeah, so that was a confusion. No, that portion is gonna be now the kitchen. So what you're looking right now is to, there's like two pilasters.
So the garage would be in the back.
Yes, yes.
How are we getting to that garage? I'm still not.
Straight in.
Straight.
Straight run.
Straight.
But it's gonna need a variance.
Yeah, okay.
It will need a variance. And Steve, the next thing that I wanna ask you is, given the location of that structure, is there a building code requirement to have that thing X number of feet from a property line? Building code.
Isn't there state code for that?
Yeah.
Yes, unless they read it. They would have to read. Okay, because basically, I guess what I'm saying is that there's two things we're talking about here. One of them is the fact that the zoning ordinance requires that you have ten feet from the property line for any structure.
Right.
If you're substantially gonna rebuild this, then what we're gonna have to do with is grant a variant, if you're gonna keep it in the same spot. You're gonna have to get a variance for the location.
Of the garage?
Well, next, and that's, that's strictly a zoning thing. The next thing is, is that there is a state, there are state code requirements for distance separations from property lines for combustible structures. That's not something that we vary. Okay? And so you may have to at some point have a discussion with the building department. Find out what you're gonna need to do in order to reconstruct that structure on that location beyond asking for a variance here.
Okay.
Because it very well may be that you won't be able to build it as a wood-framed building anymore. May have to do it as a concrete structure. Because of the, because of the building code.
I see.
Is there any garage back there where it says new garage? Is there anything there?
That's, they're saying that there is a garage there now.
There's a, there's a, there's a very like, um, there's a structure there.
Not the one that's turning into the kitchen?
No, 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 no.
They're saying that basically there's a structure there now that's a garage. What they're gonna do is they're going to rebuild it. They're going to need to get, like I said, a variance for that from us.
Right.
If that's what you wanna do. And you also may have to have a discussion concerning the type of structure.
Right.
Because of the building code requirement.
Right. So, um, I wouldn't have a problem.
Just one quick thing that, that, when I looked at this application and I saw that and I, and it wasn't part of, that structure was not part of this. My thoughts were this was coming in for a separate application in the future, that they weren't gonna be touching this at this point.
Only, the only thing is, it is on this, this site plan.
It is on, well. And plot plan, so they have to show it.
What do we do with it? It's sitting on?
I, we'd have to.
I would, right now, if they do anything to it, it'll have to come back to you.
Yeah, but, well, we have to say something in the, in any potential decision that it does not include.
Yes.
The garage that's depicted in this site plan.
And that's something, obviously, the applicant has to make a decision on.
Right.
They don't necessarily have to do that tonight.
I would think, though, just from a logical perspective, that's just my logic, that if you're thinking of turning that into a garage, you may wanna do it at the same time you're doing the rest of the application, just so you know what you're getting.
Yeah, you, we, we could potentially approve the house, but then if they really need that garage.
I think.
We may not be, we may not approve that. So the person that you're representing should know that that's either a risk to them.
I really wouldn't, um, wanna go in conflict with the codes, um, just given the fact that it's very close to the fence and I know that. And I wouldn't have a problem just bringing in a new application just for the garage. And again, why? Because we have a pressure on, you know, turning this, this house into a different state. So, you know, since we're here, since we already created the application, um, I would say if we can just, you know, continue with the application for what the house is. Even if the plans have to be, you know, resubmitted to you guys, I have no problem just resubmitting.
You don't want us to consider the garage at this point?
If you, if you can consider the garage.
It hasn't been noticed for that.
Right, okay, I understand that.
That's what I'm saying.
I think, I think, um, you know, it would be more clear if we just remove the garage from this application. I think it'll, it'll make, uh, things easier for, for both of us.
Would a delay of, like, come back next month make a difference?
That's, no, that's totally fine. That's totally fine, because the construction, again, the construction is gonna be, it's gonna take some months. So for the garage, it's an accessory building.
I guess what he, I guess what he's, uh, what he's saying is, is that you may think, consider having this discussion about the garage and including it in this application, but adjourning the meeting for the entire thing. Until next month.
Give you a chance to renotice just that portion of it for next month.
I see.
You know, because basically what you'd be doing then is coming back next month.
With the entire application.
With everything included in one application. So it, it's something that you may wanna consider.
I see. Um. I see.
Maybe we could take the comments before.
Yeah, I was gonna do that. Just wanted to make sure she's done.
We should take the comments from the audience, because you have to make a decision to protect your applicant.
Right.
They, if they absolutely need that garage, you should, you may wanna consider applying for the whole thing at the same time.
Right.
Because you could construct a building and not have a garage that somebody needs. And that might be a big problem for your, your client, so. I, I don't know that, but.
Yeah, I do know for sure that we will need a garage, like, that's for sure.
So what I'm gonna do at this point is let's, let's.
Let's hear what the audience has to say.
Any comments you wanna make? Come on up.
Good evening. Okay.
You have to start with your names.
Oh, hi, my name is Randy Paolucci. How are you?
Okay.
What's the last name?
Paolucci, P-A-O-L-U-C-C-I.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so, in reference to this build, um, I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Paola.
Paola?
Yes.
Um, Paola just said that she had no problem conforming to the zoning of a garage. So my point, just to bring up one, would be, if there's no problem conforming for a garage, why not conform to the actual zoning law?
Because the house is already out of whack.
Well, it's, it's an R one twenty, it's listed as, I believe, with a setback of fifteen feet and a combined side yard setback of forty. I don't understand the hardship here, so if somebody can explain that to me.
Hardship is a legal term at this point. Hardship does not mean hardship in the sense that you would think of it. It's, it's a legal term. It doesn't mean that somebody's really suffering.
No, no, I understand that.
It doesn't make sense to do it this way, rather do it that way.
Okay. Um, now, from my understanding, the setbacks will not be even on each side of the house. Am I correct?
Probably.
Okay. Um, I thought that was necessary in Westchester County, okay? Also, the, is now coming closer...
House doesn't have to be centered.
I understand that, but I thought the property on each side had to reach...
It's combined side yards.
Okay, combined side, so, here's my question. If they're asking for how many yards on each side of the house?
It's feet.
Feet, I'm sorry, how many feet? Was it three feet?
No, the side yard is thirteen, is of one point six feet.
Okay. So, the left side there will be corner, will be adjacent to my home, correct?
You're to the left as you face the house?
I'm two eight zero eight.
Yeah, but that, as you're facing the house, that's to the left?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So, how much closer will their, will their house be closer to mine?
It'll be sixteen feet, three inches closer to your house. So, right now, it'll be twenty feet, four inches off the property line, and the addition is bumping out the house sixteen feet, three inches towards your house.
Okay. Now, has anyone seen how close my house is to that side of the yard?
We've been there.
Okay. You don't think that's very close on...
I'm not giving an answer in a way that one would think about it.
I'm just saying, I think that's actually rather close to the side of my house.
But it's only gonna be, if I'm reading this correctly, one point six feet off of where it could be back, but what the maximum is, it's not like it's...
The, if, if your house is to, if we're staring at your house, and your house is to the left, in a standard R-120 zone, you can have a house that's fifteen feet from the property line.
Okay.
On one side. And you need twenty-five on the other.
Okay.
In this particular case, on your side, it's twenty feet away.
Right.
Theoretically, if somebody came in and built a house that was fifteen feet away, it would be legal.
Okay.
So, so...
What's the other side?
And we're talking about property lines now. The other side is...
Thirteen, thirteen six.
So, basically, what the issue is, is the combined side yards. Okay? Or deficient.
Thirty-three, six, what forty is required.
But if you consider your house, for example, solely, somebody could theoretically build a house that's fifteen feet from the property line. In this case, it's twenty.
Okay, so they're asking for an additional five feet.
They're, they're actually, no, they're...
Well, it's really, they're combined is the issue.
Combined issue and not a close issue.
I just feel that it's coming actually rather close. Now, my house is surrounded by shrubs. And I know the house is in very bad shape. I was actually friends with the owner. The house wasn't abandoned, he passed away on four, it's very bad circumstances. We know the condition of the home. I know that the roof is not salvageable, because I actually brought someone in to try to take care of it. I'm the one who got his front steps fixed, because he couldn't even get up and down his stairs anymore.
Well, the roof pretty much has a lawn growing on it.
The, it's, it's so bad that the roofer I hired to come in and try to fix it said he wouldn't even step anywhere on that roof. So, and the other structure, the so-called garage, was also in danger of collapse. So, I know there's a lot of problems there, I just am wondering, I don't, I have no problems having neighbors, I'm friendly, I get along with everybody, but I just wanna make sure that I'm not now in their kitchen. You know what I'm saying? Like, that's my only thing.
Well, that's also why I suggested that the application be adjourned so they could present everything at once.
Right, right.
So, we can see exactly where the garage is gonna be also.
I mean, I understand, I...
That affects your other neighbor on the other side.
Of course, right? And I have no objection to people moving in and bettering the neighborhood, but I'm very new at this, so it's a may...
Gentlemen, 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 gentlemen. Keep your voices down. Thank you.
I'm new at this, I didn't know zoning laws, so I'm trying to learn and see what everything is about and educate myself. So, I just felt like, wow, this looks pretty big and it's coming kinda close. So, I just wanted to make sure that, we have zoning laws for a reason. And I just wanted to make sure that the zoning laws were followed, because I didn't understand the hardship of it.
What is the distance between your house and the property line? Do you have a rough idea?
Would you know the distance from the property line to the house?
To your house?
Yeah. Thirty feet.
Thirty feet, so there'd be thirty and twenty would be about a fifty-foot distance.
Not between the two houses, it wouldn't be fifty. If they came out to my side, it would not be fifty feet.
Well, it's twenty on their side and it's thirty on your side.
Right, but...
It's fifty feet, then between the two houses.
They might be wrong, I think they're wrong. But anyway, I'm just saying, it is gonna come very close, it's gonna come much closer to those bushes.
Of course, well, they're extending out additional sixteen feet.
So, now, if you look at the homes in the area, this area was predominantly built as little vacation cottages back in the day. You know, the army would come in and everything, so most of the homes, they, so-called cookie cutter, they're smaller, they're not so big. So, I just was a little concerned about the size of this and the closeness coming and not meeting the zoning requirements. That's all. I understand having to redo, but there is no salvaging. And my other issue was, being that the properties will be closer, not only are we gonna have more noise, but also, that property is gonna have a lot of trees coming down, which is gonna take away a lot of, taking away the noise. Because that, of course, absorbs noise, you're not gonna care everything.
Well, I would say, if you left the house exactly the way it was, you'd still wanna take down a couple of those trees.
Oh, I have no problems with that, and I've looked into helping John do that.
Because that's killing that house.
It was, it's actually engulfing the home, the one above it. I know some of those trees are gonna have to, most of them, but that's what I'm saying. So, now you're adding more noise, because even if you put in a standard tree, it's gonna take years for the tree to grow, to get bigger. So, you're adding more noise, you're adding more noise by getting bigger.
Well, the house itself is not a producer of noise, it's the people that occupy it.
Well, I agree, but we all make noise, but I'm saying within...
But you could have a small house that makes more noise than a gigantic house.
I agree, but I'm just saying, that's another consideration, is all I'm saying. Like I said, I'm not opposed to people living and enjoying their lives and having neighbors, that's not my problem. It's just the zoning laws. You know, I believe if we have laws, they should be adhered to. And if this was a hardship due to a veteran, an elevator being put in, any kind of ramping system, that to me is a hardship, I wouldn't even object to something like that. But when we're talking about something, just having a bigger kitchen or a living room, that to me says, well, shouldn't we follow zoning laws? That's all.
Which is what I think we're doing.
Okay.
And just one comment is, just to maybe allay some of your fears, where they're planning to put closer to your house is two bedrooms. So, not that that makes everything okay, I'm not trying to tell you that.
Well, I can go over and say goodnight, I mean, they'll be closer.
It's not the kitchen, you mentioned that you don't want the kitchen there, but I'm not saying that makes everything okay.
Nor am I.
If you wanna see the plan, like, the bedrooms are the ones that are put in closer to your, your house.
By the way, if you wanna see these plans more close up than looking at this, you're free to look at them at the building department.
The building department, yeah, I believe Diego already did, yes, so we got that involved.
How large is your home, if I had to ask? How many square feet is your home, if I might ask?
Actually, my square footage is seven hundred and forty square feet, but on three levels. So, I have an unfinished basement, main living floor, unfinished attic. I'm a cape. Now, John's home, the home we're discussing, I believe is only eight hundred and something square feet livable space. I don't know where they're coming up with a thousand something, it's only eight hundred and change. I've been in the home, I know how big it is.
Depends on what rooms you include in living rooms.
Right, the only rooms, you can't include a garage, you can't include...
A garage isn't part of the house.
That's what I'm saying, but the size, he has no attic and no basement.
Exactly.
Right, so, the standard, it's eight hundred and eighty square feet, that home, that's all it is. That house is actually a barracks that was bought through surplus, through the US government, and put on that, I, I knew John very well. And he told me all the stories, everything about the home. He did not wanna leave that home, unfortunately, it did not end well for him, and I lost a very dear friend. So, you know, it's a little hard when, you know, you have to go through all this and then see somebody tearing everything up, which I understand, I'm okay with new build, but I just feel that we should adhere to zoning laws, I know I would. So, that's all I feel.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but the, the statutory purpose of the zoning board is to vary the zoning rules.
Okay, I understand that, right, I understand that, but taking everybody's thoughts into consideration, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Anybody?
Anything, either you, either you gentlemen wanna say something?
Thank you, thank you for your time, I appreciate it, thank you for teaching me things.
Hi, my name is Diego Narvaz, I live just behind the, the property. I agree with what you said, I have no problem with, I thought, I was under the impression it was gonna be a bigger house. I think it's, it's gonna be a decent house. The only thing I don't actually is about the new garage.
Neither are we.
I don't think there is anything down there.
Well, we, we talked about that, you know, a lot, so that is a, just looking at the plan that is in front of us, I'm looking on my iPad, and that is quite, how it's drawn is quite close to probably, I guess, your property line.
Right.
And, you know, that's, that's a difficult...
I'm behind the house, yes.
You're behind the house?
Yes.
You know, and...
I saw you out in the yard.
I don't know if there's something, I don't know if there's something there, you know, there were so many trees that I can't remember all the outbuildings and whatnot, but is there a building there?
No, that's what I'm saying, I'm surprised when I see the prints, because I know there is a shed back there.
There's a shed, but no other...
Let me tell you, I've been there for twenty-three years, I haven't seen nothing in that corner. Just to see there is a garage.
So, basically, you're saying there's no structure there?
There is no structure back there.
Okay. I never saw that, all right.
I mean, unless I missed it.
I was there, I only recall seeing the one structure back there.
Yeah, 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 the shed, the shed is right there, yes.
What I saw.
Okay.
You gotta come, you gotta come up to the microphone.
The back of the home, the back of the home has a carport, what looks like a carport.
Yeah, 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 we saw that.
I do believe, he used to have a trailer along there, but I do believe there is a structure that has a garage door on it, because when I had the roofer come in to check the roof, he said that structure looked like it was gonna come down.
Well, I saw the garage doors, that's when you, I said, you come into it straight, a straight, small driveway, and you make a hard left, and there's a garage door.
Right. And he said it was in disrepair, it would have to come down.
That's what I thought they were referring to, by the garage.
That's what I'm assuming is...
I didn't see any other structure besides the shed.
Right, so...
That's turning into finished space in the house, that carport.
So, that's coming down completely. So, they plan on putting the actual garage...
In that back corner.
All the way in the back corner, going up the whole driveway.
Pretty much where the shed is.
You can see it right there.
Oh, wow, okay, that's pretty far.
It's right behind you.
Right.
The back right corner there.
There's nothing back, there's nothing back there.
Well, yeah, there's the gentleman who has the dog, that's his house right there. So, the gentleman who lives on windmill, the two houses, Debbie, who lives on the corner, and the next gentleman on windmill, right when you come up, saw us to make the right, those first two homes, that, that actual driveway and garage will be in their backyards.
It comes right up to it.
Right.
They will visibly see it in their backyards. And that creates noise for them in their backyard, what if their bedroom's border there?
So, we, we were discussing the garage, and they haven't really applied for a garage yet, it's on this plan.
Okay.
So, we're gonna talk with the applicant as to whether they, you know, what they wanna do, because what I said earlier is, even if hypothetically speaking, we approve the house and don't approve the garage, if her client needs that garage, like, they may not get that garage. So, someone has to decide...
Right, it's just another issue to contend with, I understand, okay.
And it is a concern if someone's trying to put a garage like one foot off the property lines. It's different than a shed, you know, it's a, it's a, a serious deliberation on our part.
I'd like to know where all my birds are gonna go now, because I feed every one of them, so...
That we cannot answer, I can't answer a question about birds.
My poor birds.
Sir, do you have any comments you wanna make? You sure?
Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
That was my only comment.
My birds.
Right.
So, I suggest, and it's up to you, we put this off to next month, you could renotice just for the garage. And then submit more detailed plans for, and for the garage, so we know what we're looking at.
I see.
But keep in mind what the, what the neighbors are saying, because, you know, obviously, number one in our minds when we look at zoning applications is, can the applicant accomplish what they wanna do any other way without impinging upon the setbacks?
Right.
Like, making it closer or something.
Are most of the houses in that neighborhood under a thousand square feet?
A lot of them are, I know two of them...
It's his fault, he made you answer.
I'm, I'm sorry about that, I just, I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to put this into perspective.
A few of the homes are still considered rather small. Diego's and my house are very small. I know the next house after me, it's different, because he has a full finished basement that he redid, so it added a lot more square footage to his home. But, no, the one next to that is still original, also, I think...
What were these originally, like, two-bedroom or three-bedroom caves?
Yes, they were, most of them are two bedrooms, right, because they were built, most of them, the same gentleman built predominantly the whole neighborhood. And they were mostly built between nineteen forty and nineteen fifty.
Okay, I know the style, okay, I know what you're talking about.
Yes, so they were built as vacation homes for Sparkle Lake. And if you look at my windows, like, if you were to see my house, those windows are just standard up and down windows on a porch for a vacation home.
Right.
You know, so it's that kinda style, so, that's why, you know, changing and adding and making things bigger affects the look of the area.
Of course it does, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you again.
So, is that what you wanna do, move this to next month?
So, well, I was trying to contact, you know, the applicant, fortunately, I didn't get an answer. So, as for now, yes, I think we can wait for a month.
Okay. So, you know you have to renotice for the garage?
For the garage, yeah. So, I guess...
If, in fact, that's, you're gonna stay with that plan. Okay, and the thing that you gotta remember, as you heard, is that, that we have to, you have to make an argument for its location, and there may be other alternatives that you may wanna look at.
Right. So, I guess...
Are you, are you stuck on that, on that, on that footprint? Is there, can you reduce it in any way?
No, so, I'm, I'm just hesitant about, like, you know, making a decision right now, because if we go back and, you know, make a plan, what if eventually the applicant says at this point, no?
We're gonna adjourn to next month, then, so I don't wanna put you on the spot and give us an answer that you're gonna get stuck with, so...
What would happen?
Talk, talk to your applicant about what you wanna do with the size of the house, if they wanna keep it, keep the application with the current size that you're asking for, or reduce it somehow, and what they wanna do about the garage.
What do I have to do if I wanna have the garage as a, a separate application? Like, do I have to go through the entire process?
No, the amended, you have to note the mailing.
Basically, what you wanna do, if you wanna have a separate application for the garage, is basically take it off the, the site plan, because there seems to be a question about whether that garage actually exists right now.
Right, 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 and that's why, like...
You know, if, if there is no garage there, then you remove it from your paperwork.
Right. So, that, I guess, that's the question.
I guess, I, I, you, you could amend the application, and then you would have to renotice, or with, without the...
Well, there would be amended application, but the only thing we're telling you to notice for is the garage.
One of the things you might wanna consider is attaching the garage to the house, avoiding those setback issues.
Right, I understand that, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're getting at, and...
A little bit on the size of the house, or whatever.
You can hear the neighbors had concerns, you know, and, and if I look at this footprint, you know, even because of the garage, this makes it worse, you know, you have the side entrance on this house, and there is an existing front entrance. And you should be prepared to answer why you need that side entrance. Because even with now the garage and driving, it makes it harder to get a car, even if, you know, to get around that entrance, it's a very narrow spot. So, an obvious question is, well, why are we having a side entrance on the house to begin with?
Exactly.
And that would make your zoning variances less, you know, less deficient, you know, less severe, less substantial.
Right.
So, you know, if, you could consider the plan with the garage, why is that bump out there? You know, how would you even get a car around without driving on your neighbor, you know, the neighbor's practically into his pool to get, you know, so these are the questions we would ask in terms of this...
And again, like, as an applicant, I have then, you know, the entire right to withdraw the garage at this point and create a new application. Which is, I think, I think it's what, what I'm gonna do, because fortunately, I didn't get an answer from them. And as I said, they really need to take care of this house, as you were saying, this house really needs some work. And unfortunately, I cannot wait, you know, also from the office, we cannot wait to go back and, and, you know, gather some pieces of, of, like, of plans of what we're gonna do with the garage. And I have no problem creating a new application just for the garage.
That's what we're doing.
So...
I mean, I understand, I understand the rush, but at this stage of the game, the rush has kinda passed, that building's kinda done.
Right.
Whatever we have to do now, we gotta tweak it out, so if it's gonna take some time, we're gonna do it the right way. I understand your rush.
Well, and it's gonna go, it's gonna be the right way, because I wouldn't build anything without any permits. So, even if I remove the garage at this point...
No, no, we're not talking about permits, it's the other considerations that we're discussing.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna look at the application as a whole right now without talking about the garage.
I totally understand that, totally understand that. But I guess at this point...
Because you're gonna have to show somewhere on the plan where you're planning on putting the cars.
Even if I do the, you know, two separate application, everything has to exist on the plans.
Right.
So, I think at this point, I want to, I wanna ask you to remove...
You could either tweak the current application for next month and change something around, but definitely renotice for the garage, deciding on where you wanna put the garage.
Right, so the way I see it is that, like, from, at least logistic-wise, it's gonna be the same, the same process for me to do the application right now for the garage, to delay the month and then prepare everything for the garage, as if I were to do it in a separate way. Still, I have to prepare, prepare the paperwork. So, right, so what I, what I wanna do right now is to remove the garage from this application. So, right, so what I, what I want to do right now is to remove the garage from this application.
What I'm saying is, we don't want to remove the garage in the application because it's something we know is coming.
Right.
In one form or another, and I don't want to decide this piecemeal.
And, and, and I could tell, I can assure you right now, if we decide this piecemeal, I know where I'm voting. You're not going to like it.
Why would, why would you vote on something that I am not showing?
Why would I vote on it? Because I'll tell you right now, quite frankly, my impression of the property.
Sure.
The way it's spread out on the property, there's been no variation. Um, we're looking to expand the property, go bigger on the, on the building. We're talking about, hey, is there consis-, considerations that we could make, maybe reducing the size of that building, reducing where we want to put the garage, that type of thing?
I see.
I'm not catching any flexibility right now.
Okay, okay. So, because of the variances, I understand that. I understand that you guys want to have the whole picture on that.
Right.
Okay. So, um, you know, from that point, I guess, I would withdraw from my right to, to, to have this as a separate application, and it would go with your advice.
Yeah, just amend it and notice for the garage.
Yeah, sure. No problem.
Okay, then I move that we adjourn this to next month. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sure, but you got to come back up.
Am I to understand, um, I don't, is that foundation correct as staying there, what is already there? I believe that was just, that foundation was going to stay.
That is a building issue, okay, once they decide to build.
I'm just curious, is one, is the entire house being knocked down or one side is being salvaged?
It's not a knockdown, from what they're saying.
Right, one side is being salvaged. Okay, because I was under the assumption, uh, the assumption and told that that house was not salvageable. So, that, that's why I'm curious.
The first question I asked.
Doesn't look like it to me, but, uh, they would have to figure that out in the construction.
Well, only because of things that I had had tried to get fixed for him. They told me this house was a knockdown, not salvageable, and actually dangerous to try to do work on. So, that's the only reason why I'm asking.
You know, the, the property owner is making their own evaluation. I kind of.
Right, okay.
Would maybe make the same, uh, conclusion because it looks pretty rough, but.
Okay.
You know, she, it's, it's their decision.
Okay, I was just curious, that's all.
You know, they can do what they want to do and rebuild and re-repair.
As long as it meets bill, the building aspect.
Did you ever hear the children's book, Give a Mouse a Cookie? That's what, that's, if you read the book, that's what this project's going to be.
Thank you again.
Yes.
Okay, I move we adjourn to next month. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it.
That's it.
Happies only.
All ready.